Give everyone a chance to get situated. The board just completed executive session, so they're here, so that's why we're a couple of minutes late. Are you all set, superintendent?
I believe I am.
Okay. If I could, I'm gonna ask, we have a 7th grader here, Jake Olivia, who's here, gonna start us in the pledge. One of the reasons why he's here, not just because he wants to see us and what we do, but it's to help earn a badge for his cup's got proof. So Jake, come out up and lead us.
I can't stand Helen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Alright, we are going to get right into it. Some inter-board liaisons. I know Patience is here, Chair of the Town Council. Couple words you'd like to say?
Thank you Chair McGough, Patience Anderson from the Town Council. I wanted to draw your attention, I think you've all received this morning, an email from Kathy Seroyce requesting a tri-op meeting for next Monday. We've just been hearing worse and worse news coming out of the state. We understand and we want to work with the Board of Education to try to see if we can get a budget to the voters before the end of June. In order to do that though, I really am asking, pleading for your help and the Board of Finances' help. Soon as I make here, I'll be going to their meeting, asking them to please help us and meet with us on Monday to go over what, where we're at and how we can get through this together.
So if I could just, it's next Monday?
Next Monday.
Monday at 6:30, whereabouts, if you didn't see that?
I don't think Kathy has determined that.
Okay, okay.
But wherever we need to, if we need to do it here, I don't know what the,
Okay, so if everyone could...
rule availability is, if we have to do it in the auditorium,
Wherever, just make it happen.
Wherever we need to do it, to accommodate, you know, all three boards and obviously interested, very interested citizens.
We'll help Kathy with that tomorrow.
Okay, very good, very good.
So if every board member's could reply to Kathy in the next day or two, because it's coming up, and so we can get it attended?
Thank you very much, Shavval and Ali.
The Board of Finances meeting right now. Labor, you mean, I don't believe, do you come in here? Updates from Grand Central?
Okay, I have a couple wonderful things to share with you. Twenty middle school students are gonna be participating in something called the Final Mile tomorrow at Walton Hill Park in Gorden. This is part of a Hartford Marathon Foundation exercise in helping schoolchildren develop healthy lifestyle. The kids sign up for a six-week period where they're gonna run a marathon, basically, but a mile at a time, and they have to do it on their own. They do 25 miles, and then the 26th mile, hence the final mile, they do together in an activity, and the kids get t-shirts and everything else. So we have 20 kids doing it this year from the middle school tomorrow, so that's exciting. And then we are also gonna do, they do it now and they do it in the fall at Rensselaer Field in East Hartford. And then, we're gonna be using it, we're doing a summer fitness challenge again this year, and that's gonna be one of rewards for Center School and Middle School for the kids to participate in that activity in the fall. So we're pretty excited about that. The other thing is, we had, there were 60 science teachers, and we sent all of our 612 science teachers to a consortium professional development day, which took place a week ago, and feedback has been great. It's been all the superintendents and directing directors and science teachers. We had state representatives, state consultants there, and consultants from ACES, which is like a learn group. And they just talked about curriculum, the new next generation of science standards, and all the feedback that I've been getting has been very positive, and they probably, some people said it's the best day they spent. So 60 science teachers from all, and that's Middletown, East Hampton, Portland, Region 13, which is Cogginchuck, Cromwell, East Haddon, and Region 4, which is Deep River. So they all get together, so it was a very, very great day. And I, you know, thank all the principals for letting that happen. Dr. Arturski's here, I know that you were instrumental in the planning of it. So it was a great day, so.
Thank you. Schools, principals, any updates, thoughts, communication you wanna share?
A couple from the high school. We just wrapped up our AP testing, so that's always a benchmark for students. Some students take 2, 3, 4, on the rare occasion 5. So we made a change this year, we did the testing right in this room. Normally, not normally, in past years, we'd go onto the rectory at St. Patrick's. We tried to bring it in house. Went fairly well, we have two bugs to work out, and we're gonna move to the house here in the future. And with regards to our NEAS evaluation, our accreditation visit, which will take place next March, we just had a few very productive sessions where our standards committees, for a couple hours after school on two occasions, and then during the PT on Friday, spent another two-hour block just really honing in on evidence and pulling it together, some of it digitally, some of it just paper evidence that they needed to pull together. But we feel like we're in pretty good shape. This whole spring has been about gathering evidence so that in the fall, we can really concentrate on writing, on writing the self-study base on that evidence. A lot of great things happened here, we feel in very good shape in those past few sessions, I think it was very productive.
Yes?
We welcomed the class of 2030 kindergarten for screening at the base section. See, they're shocking. And then this week, the preschools are also coming for the kids to have a tour of the building, but we did prepare an orientation. And we just would like to invite the board. Next week, we have our annual writing celebration beginning at Memorial. So all students in the school will be represented in the gym. They're writing from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, class books. Wonderful piece of writing if you wanna see growth and the writing curriculum come alive, come to Memorial. So there is drop-in on the 24th from 5:30 to 8:30, but you're welcome any morning or after school from Tuesday till Friday.
I was just gonna ask you when, you don't wanna just show unannounced?
Before or after school.
Okay.
Or the evening.
Center School, anything, yes?
So it'll be a transition on the mind as well. The 3rd grade will be visiting Center School on Friday for their first formal visit. And they've been writing letters with the current 4th graders throughout the year to learn about what it is to be a 4th grader. And they get to come to Center on Friday and meet that class and get a tour of the building and meet the 4th grade teachers. So we're looking forward to welcoming them. And the night before, we're offering an opportunity for the parents of 3rd graders to come to Center School. The instrument sign-up is that evening, and Mrs. Dovin and I will be co-hosting an event for our 3rd grade families to welcome them to Center School for the 2017-2018 school year. And while you have your calendars open for the 24th, that's also the night of the Center School concert here at the high school. So our, it's the one time a year that our 4th and 5th grade band performs together. So they have nine strong numbers. And so we're doing it for the school community in the afternoon on the 22nd as well.
Also on the 24th. Okay, what time on the 24th?
6:30.
Okay. Middle School.
We wrapped up our smarter balance assessments last, at the end of last week. We're just doing makeups this week, so. Thanks to Richfield and his team for having support on site. We really had little to no technology issues, so it was very smooth. Just a lot of end-of-year events going on. The Vania Chorus had their spring concert on last Thursday night. They will also be playing at the New Britain Games game tomorrow. So they're taking a trip to New Britain, and that'll be a nice celebration for them. And our 8th grade class will have their semi-formal coming up this Friday. Ask me what time they can leave to go get their hair done.
Okay, so before we move on, I'm gonna do a little, something different. Couple weeks ago, for those of you that don't know or didn't see it, our town was recognized on Channel 3 for the talent of the day, or the week, whatever.
20 towns and 20 cities.
That's it, I should've known that title. So also part of that is that they give a $1,000 donation to a local organization that's happening within the town. So with that, I'm going to embarrass Mr. Dalton, and also thank him. He and the crew team are the recipients of the $1,000 award from Channel 3. So with that, we're gonna play a couple-minute segment that was on Channel 3. Told you we were gonna embarrass you.
Good thing we have Mr. Field in here.
Okay, while you guys figure that out. I do need to add something to the agenda. I did not at the beginning, we got someone to, Jake doing the pledge. If I could add, here we go, under new business, item 12.6. So I'll make a motion to add a resignation as a board member on the agenda for discussion.
12.6.
12.6. Right, yeah. Can I get a second to that?
A second, a second.
Any of them? All those in favor? Thank you. Oh, I figured we'd just discuss it there.
We're still learning, the system.
Your training ended on Friday.
The superintendent will be attending.
If it's that quiet, you could probably hear it come out of my ear. I'll keep moving. We'll let you know when we're ready. Okay, we're gonna continue, he's gonna let me know when we're ready. So we'll open up next item of the agenda, sorry for this confusion. Audience or citizens, so. Anyone, any comments, questions, thoughts? If you could, just give your name and address for the record. Any audience or citizen? Yes?
Mary Ann Dosler, 56, Way Drive. And I just wanted to comment about the budget. And obviously, the Town Council Chair Board, and we're gonna have a pride board next Monday. Having attended many of the Town Council meetings about what they're looking to do with the budget, there seems to be a willingness to consider moving budget forward to the voters before July 1st, which is great, but that preserves that the budget will pass. And I would ask for clarification that what's gonna be presented tonight about what the impact could be, it's only when the budget passes. So even if we get a referendum vote by, before the end of July, that doesn't get us out of the woods, correct?
I think it would all, without having a dialogue, it would depend on what gets put to referendum. And then like I said, what passes, so.
Unless a budget is passed to my understanding, there's no assurances, correct?
Correct. And we will get into that later, yes, definitely. Anyone else? Hearing none, move on. Continuing. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Julie Anne, Deb, seconds. All those in favor? I will turn it over.
Yes.
Yes.
It is day five, 20 towns in 20 days. As we go around the state, we're donating $1,000 to a nonprofit in each community.
And here's a live hook from drone 3 over today's talent of the day, East Hampton. And Channel 3 and London Bureau Chief Kevin Hogan is live here now with today's recipient, the East Hampton High School rowing team, Kevin.
That's right, Denise and Mark were live at Sears Park in Lake Pocahontas. This is a 500-acre lake, and it really is the heart of the community year-round, physically and emotionally. But comes springtime, follows the training ground and regatta field for the young East Hampton High School crew team, the Bell Raiders. Now started just two short years ago, East Hampton High is one of only 13 high schools statewide, now to include a rowing team. Wesleyan University Women's Crew Team practices here on the lake, which organizers say is the perfect field for practice and competition. The shells which new cost tens of thousands of dollars are old hand-me-downs from other crew teams, including one for West Point. Now this season, the squad is training on this newer one, a four-person shell with outriggers. And the backers and supporters of the East Hampton Rowing Team expect that this sport will not only grow in the school, but beyond, into a community-wide crew team. And we're live here at Sears Park, and I'd like to bring in to our view right now, Michael Dalton, he is the Assistant Principal of East Hampton High School. And Mr. Dalton, on behalf of everyone at Channel 3, WSPB, and 20 towns in 20 days, we're presenting the team, the crew, the whole squad, a $1,000 check from Channel 3.
Well, we really appreciate that, as you said before, we're a young club, and we are a nonprofit, and we rely on donations for everything that we do. And this is really fantastic, because it's gonna help us expand our programs and give the kids more opportunities, and to expand our programs, and hopefully to expand it to all the residents of East Hampton so that they can use and enjoy this great resource we have here at Lake Pocahontas as well.
Mr. Dalton, it was the seed that you planted that started this, right?
Yeah, I mean, it was an idea. I've never rowed, really personally myself, but I just figured since the lake was such a great resource, the town is built around the lake, and that's a very rare thing. Most crew programs have to travel long distances to get to a water facility where they can train. And here we have one right in the heart of town. The lake is the heart of town, and, you know, rowing just really fits the character of this town. And we think it's really gonna take off after people learn about us.
Well, congratulations, let's tell the kids. Hey guys, you got $1,000! How was that? There are lives of all the newsroom, you're welcome! Lives of all the newsroom in East Hampton for 20 towns in 20 days. Kevin Hogan, Channel 3, I will.
Again, thank you. Very nice. Okay, so now we're gonna go on more video stuff. And we have some recognitions.
We are recognizing a Center School volunteer and a couple of Center School children tonight, so Center School is at the limelight. We're gonna start with the Center School Connecticut Association of Schools Volunteer of the Year Award, Ms. Barbara Sargent. Barbara, you have a guest here tonight, would you like to give us a full report?
My husband Dan.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight. We're gonna embarrass Barbara for just a moment. Center School has written up just a couple nice paragraphs about her. Center School is fortunate to benefit from the ongoing generosity and dedication of Barbara Sargent. A former parent educator in the East Hampton Public Schools who retired in 2015 from Center School, Barbara returns each week to support the teachers of Center School. Barbara knows intimately the inherent challenges that teachers face each day as they strive to balance their many demands. In order to support our entire school community, especially our students, Barbara gives her time and service to our teachers. By taking care of them, she is in turn doing what she has done for decades, taking care of our students. Barbara can be found copying instructional materials each week, making sure the Center School supply cabinet is in proper order, or just generally checking in with the teaching staff to see what they need and how she can help them get ahead. Barbara is never one to say no when she knows a project or task will benefit the students and families of Center School. On a recent occasion, as Barbara was walking out the door after her weekly voluntary commitment at Center School, she overheard that the Center School plays program was in need of copying. And what did she say? "I'll be back tomorrow." That's Barbara. She was back the next morning to make sure all 600 play programs were copied and organized so that staff could focus on the daily needs of the students. To know Barbara is to know that she is kind and generous in all aspects of her life. Whether volunteering for the school, or the East Hampton Ambulance Association, she is a model to all members of her community. What matters most is helping a friend or neighbor in need, and that's clear to see in Barbara's actions. We at Center School feel fortunate to see her smiling face each week and to know we have such a consistent support in Barbara. Barbara truly makes a difference for the teachers and students of Center School. Barbara, thank you very much.
This time I have two arms.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara.
And I know Barbara's not one to keep quiet, so I'm sure she might have a couple words she'd wanna say. See, I've known her my whole life, so I can say that.
I started a few years ago because I heard one of the teachers say one day, "Oh, I just come back at night to copy." And I said, "That's just not right." They're supposed to be doing their mom thing at night, or their dad, and they're not supposed to be at school. But they do, like, I live near the school, so I see them going home at 5:00 in the afternoon, and some of them live far, so that's probably what inspired me to do that. Thank you all.
And next, we're gonna recognize a 4th grade student, Nihya Sedhana. Nihya, if you would come and stand right where Ms. Sargent was standing. And would you introduce your guests tonight to the board? Who did you bring?
My mom and my dad.
And what's your dad's name? Oh, same to the whole lot of us.
Sandeep Sedhana.
And your mom? Thank you very much for joining us. So 4th grade student, Nihya Sedhana, approached the annual fire prevention and safety poster contest opportunity with maturity and clarity. She searched through the educational materials and examples to develop an idea that was creative, artistic, and delivered a clear and sound message for fire safety. As a result of her creativity and commitment, Nihya was recognized as a county winner, and her work was celebrated alongside students from across the region at a recognition luncheon. Nihya provides a fine example of art studio participation to her peers. She works hard, has fun, and she worked to make sure her project was seen through completion while including elements of design and artistic expression. Nihya is a positive community member within the art studio. She is responsible, studious, and lends a fine sense of humor to our interactions while engaging with purpose in all art lessons and tasks. And I think we have a close-up of the, of the poster. There we go. So congratulations, thank you very much. If you would come forward, and parents, come right down and take pictures right, don't be shy, come right down.
Let's get Mary back here too. Here you go.
Thank you.
Alright. Yes. Congratulations. We've got the poster in the background as well. We're also recognizing two students who were recognized with arts awards from the Connecticut Association of Schools. And I think our first one, Lindsay, her mom just had foot surgery, so Lindsay is not here tonight. So we're going to go right to Leah Kohler. Leah, if you would come down, please. You know right where to stand, right? The Arts Recognition by the Connecticut Association of Schools is an annual award, and the art and music teacher wrote this up about you, Leah. First of all, let's introduce your guests as well, if you don't mind.
My mom, my dad, and my brother.
And what are their names?
My brother is Ben.
Hi Ben. And, oh, and mom and dad is appropriate. Thank you all for joining us. 5th grade Leah Kohler is a phenomenal clarinetist, who enjoys a challenge and volunteers for any extra parts needed. Her enthusiasm is contagious, she is a great role model in band. She's performed at morning bus arrival, starting the day on an upbeat note. Leah goes the extra mile in the art room as well. She begins each new unit with thoughtful reflection. Leah challenges herself as she progresses to acquire and refine new skills. Expressing her ideas and feelings through the medium of art is a joyful process for Leah, and she shares this energy and positivity with all students around her. She's always one to tackle new learning in the areas of art production, including working in 3D design. Leah is pleasant and supportive of others. She looks for ways to learn and grow as a young lady while truly enjoying her creative endeavors. We have a couple of Leah's artwork. Leah, do you wanna describe the one on the left? Because it doesn't, doesn't, the picture doesn't quite do it justice here.
Yeah, it was reprinted in white. It's supposed to be a basketball court.
Yeah?
It's a power drill basketball, and it's in all the jerseys.
Okay, and it's, you used the 3D printer for that, correct? We actually have a 3D printer at the Center School. And so you can see the Bell Raiders with the number 10, is that your number? And then the basketball in the back? And then the picture on the other side?
That was the playground design from the beginning of the year.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, and congratulations. And parents, you're welcome to come down and be in the picture, take pictures, don't be shy. Leah, congratulations to you, very well done. Alright. Big smiles now.
If you guys need to leave, I would understand, I don't wanna keep you here. So you're more than welcome to stay. Moving on to Emily Cassandra, you're up, student representation.
So first off, we have a senior costume, our senior costume expo is Thursday from 6 to 10. And there's, oh, sorry, 6 to 8, not 6 to 10, I don't know why I said 6 to 10. to 10:00, and there's, oh, sorry, 6:08, not 6:00 to 10:00, I know why I said 6:08, not four hours. And it's in various places throughout the building. I know the main one, it goes to the calf, then also to the library. And then our spring sports are coming to an end. I don't know if every spring sport, when their last match is by number few, they're finishing up this week. And then we have spring sports awards on June 2nd.
This is Thursday, actually, we had our National Arts Society Talent Show here at the high school, so it was, it went amazingly. We had so many people who were so talented in the school, able to showcase our talents, it was making us feel aggressive for me to be there. And as you mentioned, we're taking testing rap above this past week, so it's kind of a big stress later for some of the juniors and seniors taking a bunch of AP classes, as well as the prom coming up this time.
Busy weekend, middle school, is that maybe?
Where's the prom at this year?
Beniely's in Southfield.
Very nice. Any questions for them? Thank you. Personnel, we have some dates set for negotiation for the custodial.
Custodians, parents, and cafeteria.
Cafeteria, so those will come up over the next month and a half. We'll move forward on that.
Have you said parents yet?
In those dates that I gave you?
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all in there.
Okay.
Policy curriculum.
Policy curriculum has not met since last time, but we have some things to do tonight.
Yes, we do. Right, finance, transportation, building grounds.
Has not met, but obviously, my next budget, and if Paul has not dated on the bus contract, we'll report on that.
Liaisons, learn, we are having our end of year meeting June 8. Superintendent will come, I've invited Mary to come, and, okay, to know about that. Building committee, anything new? I know last time, everything's still set on schedule?
You drive up that main drive in the daylight, you see that all that area over there by the hills slowly, the clean hill piles there are disappearing. Yeah, they're working on the landscaping, cleaning up all around the building. They are scheduled to pave, pave over Paradise, 40s and 50s hallway, the last week of this month. So that's one of the last big pushes. There's obviously a lot of punctual items inside the building that will be taken care of. But that major work that they said would be done by the end of May is scheduled to be done by the end of May.
And I have to ask a question about graduation. I know it's 13th of June, it's going to be here.
19.
19. 13. You guys are okay with 13?
About a second.
I know, you're okay. 19. But the question that I'm sure everyone keeps getting is, and I'm getting, is it going to be in front or back? Or do we know yet?
I think we're going to have it out back on the soccer field oriented, so that nobody has to stare into the setting sun. As nice as the front of the building is, as nice as that surface is, and it has been a bit of a tradition, we lose a lot of parking, and the entire crowd sits on a parking lot and stares directly into the setting sun as we have the graduation. So, I think with the new parking that I just described, that they're going to pave over, all the parking will have available here, we're going to move it out back onto the soccer field when they're committing, and as I said, oriented along way on the soccer field, so that nobody has to stare into the sun.
Nice.
Ed, are you ready to sit in?
I don't know, I think we're looking at the laboratory with some simulcast in the gym.
Superintendent's report.
I had the opportunity to meet with some members of the Board of Education, the Town Council, and the Board of Finance last week. Obviously, their concern was, what is the impact of the schools if we don't have a budget in place by July 1? So, I thought I would present that this evening, so that everybody hears the information. I didn't want some people to have the information, some people not to have the information. So, obviously, the complexities of not having a budget set on July 1 is that by statute, the budget, we obviously do have a budget, things go on, but it is set at the current 1617 rate, which means that we are operating with a 0% budget. So, we still have money to spend, school still opens, but until a referendum is passed, you're operating on a 0% increase. So, the complexity of knowing that we have a $900,000 request increase is, on July 1, even though that request is still in place, we don't know at that point, perhaps, what the education cuts, municipal cuts will be to the town. We don't know the percentage of the cuts that will be passed on to the Board of Ed or passed on to the taxpayer. We also don't know how much of that $900,000 increase will even be supported by the Town Council, because they still have not done their review of our budget. And, obviously, it still has to pass in a referendum. It's our first year of a bifurcated budget, so it's unclear as to that impact on the budget as well. However, on July 1, it reaches the point where I've got to let the principals know how many teachers and how many programs we are going to have. We can't open in August and not know, do we have seven kindergarten teachers, or do we have six kindergarten teachers? Do we have seven 5th grade teachers or 6th grade teachers? Is the high school operating with six people in this department or five people in this department? And while I would like to be optimistic and say that we could schedule ahead for the whole $900,000 increase, should the Town Council cut us, should the municipal aid be taken out of our funding, should the referendum not pass, then at that point, we would have to start canceling sections and reducing programs. So, my intention with the board approval was, with board approval, was to kind of anticipate a scenario that allows us to operate if we have a shortfall of funding from the state, as it says at the top of the sheet, with potential cuts from the Town Council, or if the budget doesn't pass at 3.41%. So, my recommendation is that we look at certain positions that we could add back, and what I tried to do was take positions that it's easier to add back. None of these are easy to live without, they're just easier to add back. So, none of these are in any particular order. The board still has yet to make their final decisions, and, but we would be looking to reduce a health teacher in grade 6 to 12. We have one full-time certified health teacher. It means that our PE teachers, who are duly certified in health and PE, would have to make up health, either by cutting back PE classes or doing it as a component within the PE classes. We would look unfortunately to offer less world language, and this is from a proponent of world languages beginning in the elementary school. Unfortunately, we would lose a lightly 6th grade Spanish or cut back on offering 6 to 8. We would lose one math teacher at the middle school in the form of a person who's doing remedial math, that person would go back to the classroom. We would lose one teacher at the high school, so instead of having six teachers teach math, we would reduce it to five. That obviously results in a loss of math courses at the high school. We would reduce one science teacher at the high school, that reduces, seven teachers in the department reduced to six, that's obviously less classes in high school science. Because of the numbers in kindergarten, we are looking at reducing the number of reading teachers. I would love to be able to add a kindergarten. As you recall, our NESDEC projections projected that we would have 112 kindergarten students, so we budgeted for six sections. We already have 140 students signed up for kindergarten.
Could you repeat that part? I think that's a good thing to stress.
Right. Ideally, I would be coming to you tonight and saying, "We need to add a kindergarten teacher to the budget." Our projections indicate 112, we budgeted for six. We are already at 140, and we know we pick up especially younger children over the summer. So, our intention is to have seven sections of kindergarten. Knowing that it is highly unlikely that I will be able to add to the budget, we're going to take one of our three remedial teachers and have one of them return to the classroom. We'll look to not fill a custodian position that was a result of retirement. The new things that we added into the budget, just a couple of small stipends, I don't think we can add anything new, we don't know what's going on with the budget, and this was offset against known retirements, but we would hold on JV volleyball and JV cheerleading until a budget is passed.
So, these were the things, remember when we were doing the budget, that were the red, yellow, green items? These were the green items that we put in and approved. If we don't have a budget, we're not doing it.
We would also hold off on the music teacher increase point two. We've got this beautiful digital music lab here, students have signed up for the courses, but we would not be able to increase his position without knowing the outcome of the budget. I would hold all supply line items in the budget, except for what was absolutely crucial to open the doors with. Obviously, there's things that we have to buy that we would just have to wait until after a budget is in place. And then we would look at line items in the budget and reduce them even further to the tune of $50,000 to $100,000, especially until we know the effect of this year's open enrollment with our new insurance policy. On the back page, should the cuts go deeper than $900,000, whether municipal aid is cut back and the Town Council puts that on the Board of Education to find that money, or if the budget didn't pass and we were going below $900,000, actually, the front page, if we actually drop below $300,000, then now we need to go to the class sizes at Memorial and Center, which were spared on the front page, but they would not be spared, we would need to look at reducing at least three teachers, two from Memorial, one from Center, and we would eliminate the family and consumer science program at the high school. Since fall sports would have started at the middle school, we would look at possibly reducing winter sports and spring sports. Now, understand that, you know, I don't mean this as a, you know, as a doomsday scenario, but on July 1, we cannot put ourselves in a position, if we don't have our budget of 3.41% approved. I cannot put this district in the position of just moving forward, and at whatever point the General Assembly passes a budget, or we have a budget referendum in town that passes, then looking and saying, gee, we didn't get the $900,000, now we've got to look for cuts. So, instead of starting with these programs and places, now we're saying in October, gee, we've got to cancel five math courses at the high school, five science courses, et cetera. We've got to rip children out of the classroom at the Center School and divide them up among others. To me, it's easier to add those in rather than rip those out. Now, when I explained this to the Town Council and the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed members who were there last week, obviously, they were concerned, which is part of the reason why the chairperson of the Town Council is here tonight, hoping to move things along with a tri board meeting on May 22. I urge people in this room to attend the Town Council meeting the next night on May 23, where if they are going to have a June referendum, May 23 is pretty close to their deadline for that. They have May 23, they could actually have a meeting, their next meeting is June 6, they could set the referendum date, that would be the last Tuesday in June. Now, the complication is every time we open up the Hartford Current, there's different news about the General Assembly. When you open up tomorrow's Hartford Current, you're going to hear about deeper cuts to municipal aid. The governor released version two of his budget. If you didn't like version one, I guarantee you're not going to like version two. I don't think the General Assembly's going to like version two either, but right now, we're not getting any news out of Hartford with any other plan but one that cuts, you know, at this point, closer to, instead of $1.6 million cut to our overall aid, it's now closer to $2.6 million. I've only roughly estimated about $900,000 in cuts on this page. This does not get to the next $1.1 million that the governor does not support. So, I would encourage you to continue to write Melissa Zebron and Senator DeNares, and let them know that the governor's proposal round two is still not satisfactory to the towns. I realize Connecticut is in a difficult situation, and I honestly would tell you that if they feel that the town of East Hampton is in a different place and is not entitled to the extra $2 million in educational cost of funding, then you reduce it over 10 years. So, we say, okay, over the next 10 years, we're going to lose $2 million, that's $200,000 each year. That we could swallow, roughly, but we could swallow that rather than having the rug pulled out from under us. And I don't speak as a superintendent who's in any other position different than any other superintendent. If you go online, you know, everybody around us is having the same meeting tonight, saying, "The governor has just in his proposals pulled the rug out from under school funding." And if a change is need, it took us a lot of years to get into this mess, it's going to take us some years to get out of it, to try and solve it in one year on the backs of towns and on the backs of our children is just wrong.
So, we have two scenarios, right now, I think immediately. We have May 22, a tri board meeting that'll hopefully go off, and hopefully, the council the next night, or at their next meeting at the latest, will set a referendum. That's would be ideal, that's the way we would want things to go forward.
Right, but, you know, and understand-
If the budget passes or not, that there would be a referendum when we move forward with that budget.
Correct. Yeah, and that's the scenario that, you know, some people are concerned about, because once the school budget passes, that is the school budget, it would require an additional or supplemental tax bill once the-
Once the state.
Once the state budget is passed, if there were cuts in municipality.
Okay, so option two is that the council does not set a referendum day prior to July 1, and we have to operate with a 0% current budget, and if that is the case, page one is what we're looking at, day one of school.
Right, and understand that page one is not a 0% increase, and being optimistic that we would get something, but it's closer to $375,000 rather than the $900,000. So, it doesn't cut us all the way to zero.
But this is where we would be without a referendum on day one of school.
If there's no referendum in June or early July, in order to allow us to begin to schedule our buildings, then these are the cuts, should the board approve these, that would go into place the first day at school.
How's everyone doing? Questions? Is the superintendent on this?
No, just some comments.
I'm sure there's comments, yes. Go ahead.
I was the first one that knew, so. So, just reiterating, come July 1st, we're just, this is a guest estimate, so we are going to make a decision as far as where we're going to be or how we're going forward based on some of the recommendations.
If we have a budget or not?
No, if we don't have a budget. So, I just want to go through a few of them, one by one. So, with the health teacher, in a time where we're exercising health and exercise, basically, we're taking away gym time and exercise time by incorporating health and gym together, because we need one teacher to teach both and incorporate both subjects in one. So, with the Spanish teacher, number two, if we're looking at reducing and not offering it at the 6th grade level, what we're doing is we're losing a course. That means possibly an extra study hall time, which means two study halls for our 6th graders, just one. So, that's something to take into consideration. So, that's a lost course that if all of a sudden we lose this year, when is we're going to get it back next year? Because I feel like in this town, you take something away, when do we get it back? Don't. With math teachers, 6 through 8, as well as the reading teacher, so this is the remedial math and reading- So this is the remedial math and reading position, um, in a time where larger graduating class sizes are going to be at the middle school. Um, and for those who need the most help, we're basically taking their help away. Um, for the math teacher, as well as the science teacher in high school, again, we're increasing class size and we're reducing again math and science course. So again, we take that away, don't know if we're gonna get that back. As far as the custodian's concerned, now people say, oh, well, it's not a teaching, teaching position, uh, you know. Well, I guess the kids can't get dirty because, you know, we need the supporting staff to be able to support the teachers and the children. Um, and I want to reiterate with the, those items on hold such as JV volleyball, cheerleading, music teacher, um, um, supply items. We're starting the year off without those items. So basically I anticipate a lot of being sent to home to parents saying, bring crayons, pencils, paper, because we're not going to supply that. Um, same thing with volleyball and cheerleading, just not going to happen until we have a budget. So to, for me, I'm, I am, I'm shaking, man. Um, this, it's, it's, at this point, we have provided town council, board of finance, all the information needed for us to be able to pass a reasonable, feasible budget. And if they take a look at this and determine that we don't need a health teacher, or we can combine new gym health, or we don't need Spanish, you know, world language for sixth graders, they could get in seventh and eighth. Um, it angers me and I would hope that parents and staff and teachers come to, uh, the May twenty-second and twenty-third to express your opinions on this particular budget and realize what could potentially be taken away, if not more, each year.
Now, I don't, I don't wanna create the wrong impression. It was not a, there was not a, it, 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 last week's meeting, there was not a feeling of not moving forward. You know, people did dig their heels in and say, we will not move forward with a, with a referendum. Um, it's, it's difficult, the, the, the concern is moving forward with a referendum without knowing exactly what cuts are coming to municipalities. Um, if, and you know, there's, there's two scenarios. We find out about the cuts at some point and then the town council can say, okay, that these cuts aren't too bad. We can pass them on to the taxpayer. Or they can say, gee, let's have the, the school pick up some of them, let's reduce that nine hundred thousand and we'll pass some of them on to the taxpayer. So, you know, there's, there's all scenarios as far as when we know the figure, what, what happens. Uh, it, so I don't wanna, and this is not something that the town council has created. This is just an issue that we face because the general assembly, um, has not indicated at this point exactly what the status of municipal aid is. Now, you know, part of me was optimistic, even if they didn't have the budget until August, I felt like, you know, they could stand up and say, yes, but don't anticipate one point six million loss in municipal, in municipal, uh, funding. Anticipate a zero percent increase from what you had or some reduction within, within the types we've, we've experienced the last couple of years. But there's a big difference between us losing a hundred thousand or a hundred seventy-five thousand in municipal aid like we did last year as opposed to losing one point six or two point six million.
Other thoughts, comments, anybody?
Where do, where do you start? I mean, it's, I don't know what to say. It's, you know, I, I don't, I don't have any comments. It's just, I mean, you're looking at this and it's, it's slowly dismantling the school system. So, yeah, I mean, we're having to get out of Hartford that this is unacceptable. You know, they're not even taking into account what effect it could have on school systems across the state. And if you move school systems, you lose a town's, you know, I mean, we're known for having a great school system. We might not be known for that anymore. You know, property values, people will move into town, people will be able to move in out of town, um, out of state, literally move out of state. But, yeah, um, it's very disheartening and, you know, the governor's budget, if that's, I haven't seen the second one, but that's just totally un-.
And they're, they're talking, well, I guess September or even October before the state could have a budget.
Yeah.
The meeting I went to on Friday, people were saying October. Now, whether that's the case or not, but if you heard the news this morning, they were discussing sugary drinks and taxing them at a penny an ounce.
Don't worry about the budget. Jared, yes?
Um, two items. Um, I understand why the positions that are on this list were chosen in that they can be added back easy if we ended up getting some of that funding back. What's missing in my opinion though is a scenario, and maybe this is just not possible, but I'd like to see, you know, possible cuts to any administrative staff. I mean, it's easier to grab teachers because there's a lot of them. I know the administrative pool is small, but I think it would be unfair to not at least consider that if you haven't already. Um, and then my, my question was, I understand, you know, if we don't have a budget July first, this is what we're gonna start the year, the year with. If we get a budget in our funding in August, when do we know we can start adding some of these back? When can we, once we have a budget and we know what we're getting, when can we start paring this down to something more realistic?
I mean, once it goes through the town as well?
Once we pass a budget.
Once everything's done.
And everything's done and we know we're getting state aid.
Um, how long, from that point, would it take to reading state?
Will it have to wait up to the next budget year or?
I know.
No, I, I, I mean, some of these could be added, you know, if we, if, two weeks before school, we know we have these, then, you know, we could, we could still squeeze them, we could still squeeze them in. If it's October and, you know, things are pretty well set, I, some of them would be second, you know, in the middle school and high school would be second semester, we'd start, we'd start with the second semester.
And start to hire teachers maybe year two, yeah.
There'll be lots of unemployed ones across the state.
Jeff, you have some comments?
Yeah, um, what I wanted to, to articulate, uh, the, so there is, there's a law that says, and I can't remember the name of it. Uh, that school budgets can't be below zero percent with the exception of when there is a cut in funding from the state. So we can, and that's what we're talking about here, uh, that, that funding from the state. So, so our budget could get cut, we could be well below zero.
Right, so the, the NBR, minimum budget requirement, you cannot go below zero. But there's a provision now being discussed that if your ECS is cut, you can go below zero by the amount of your ECS cut. So should we be cutting ECS five hundred thousand, we theoretically, our budget could be zero minus five hundred thousand.
Right, right.
That's not, yeah, they're discussing it, right?
They are discussing that.
This, this is the same folks that are also discussing cutting us two point six million. So, and one goes hand in hand with the other. Um, I think that's just an important thing to articulate. Um, and I would, I wanted to kind of respond to a very positive thing that you said. Uh, that this wasn't something the town council agreed, um, which, yes, you're correct. However, the town council has not passed the budget through to referendum. Um, and I see no reason for them to do that unless they wanted to cut it. Because it's not like they can increase it. It's not like the state can, you know, is going to increase the aid that we get. The only question is, is the state going to give us less or the same, right? Uh, so I can only assume that the town council is sitting on this because they think that the state may not cut it so much and then they would wanna take a, you know, a hatchet to, the budget forward.
The, and then again, not defending or putting them down, my take on what the councils stand, some of them feel that by not putting a budget forward at this time until they know the numbers is that they don't want the town to vote on a budget and then in a few months they have to sign up for supplemental tax bill with the feeling that this isn't what the, the town voted on, it's not there. They want the town to vote on what the actual budget will be without having to do a supplemental.
Or overtaxing.
That's, or overtaxing, you know, so that's what I'm getting from several of the members. So, whether that makes sense or not, I mean, play it out.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it's, it's not going to get any better, it's only going to get worse. And, and, and I appreciate what you're saying. I personally have no issue with sliding in for this. Um, I, I think that if they wanted to do something that would support the schools and the education process and the kids and the teachers, that they would put this to referendum. And then when we get hit with whatever we get hit with from the state, then we deal with it. But the most positive thing that could happen right now is that the budget that is currently, and board of finance already, already hacked a good money out of it already, that number goes to referendum. And then we, as, as a town, need to vote it in and we deal with whatever the state's gonna deal with in October, right? That's, so.
Yeah, okay.
I agree.
Does anyone have anything you wanna add?
There's not much you can say, I mean, it really is what it is. And I think we just have to move forward as a town. I mean, part of the, part of the issue and the big debate is really, okay, if we get a budget out there and we do get whacked, um, what, what do you do then as people that are against sending out another tax bill? So some of those people would rather destroy, you know, the district and things and, and not tax the people to, you know, make up the difference. So that's, that's more the, the big debate, is how do you, how do you handle what's gonna happen? You know, if it's a little bit of a cut, like you said, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, yeah, right, you spread it around, the town can absorb it. If it's a million, yeah, my opinion, the townspeople have to share the burden. We're all living in Connecticut, we're all, everyone's got a job.
So next Monday, tribe board, Tuesday, town council.
Where's the tribe board?
We don't know yet. To be determined, location.
Okay.
Hopefully that's meeting show up. Bus contract?
We are still working with DACO, we should have something in the next several weeks.
Okay.
You did what you did. I know. Okay, and finally, the enrollment report, we have that.
Can I ask, you know, in the center school, there were two more students, um, in March, we got, we had three more students in the center. Where are the two additional students in center, workway?
I'm sorry, you should be, I mean, here.
Two additional students since last month, your school, yeah.
So it was-
Two students in only fourth grade.
Workway, and that brought up to one sixty-seven. And then in March, it was three additional in fifth grade, and that brought up to one sixty-two.
And is that the, is that the, the big group?
Yes.
Two? Fourth is the-
They share that title. There's only five between them, but, uh, fifth grade has the larger sections because they have the, they only pass six. Fourth grade is actually a little bigger.
I have a hard dick finding where enrollment, you know, up nine since, or eight since January, since we came back from Christmas Day.
When does, so the bulk of kindergarten registration, do you think the bulk would be the letter of the registration?
Yeah, we do, I mean, there's a soft deadline, so you can sign, kind of plan on your numbers, but usually because, you know, there's a lot of kindergarten families that are new to the district, will have registration over the, the summer. Now, I know that the team worked very hard to try to narrow it down, so we get less over the summer. But even at one forty, you really get seven sections for their first experience of a full day school instead of six.
That's a lot. I have a kindergarten, I have to worry.
How much is that now?
All right, presentation, program presentation, here we go. Mr. Fiddler, Mr. Smith, I'm getting them going.
Would you like to enroll?
Yes. All right, so, um, there's a, there's a little bit of a bitter irony in, um, presenting a schedule where we're trying to open up opportunities, expand opportunities coming right after a budget discussion and we limit those opportunities. But, um, nonetheless, we've been looking at an eight-period schedule for several years now and, uh, I think are finally at the point to, to put it into play. So I'll just give you a little bit of background, talk about how we wound up here, give you some of the nuts and bolts, um, of what it's going to look like, and then answer any questions that you might have. So this really started several years ago and, um, a couple of the major drivers were the state of Connecticut with their secondary school reform initiative, was moving to twenty-five credits as a graduation requirement. And we have twenty-two credits requirement. So we had to look at ways of making sure that all of our students, um, could reach that, could meet that. Um, as well as being a small school with a lot of singleton classes, the next slide that'll pop up there will kind of show you some of those singleton classes. It just was very difficult. Every year, um, two or three would butt up against each other and students would have to make difficult choices. Uh, Mr. Dalton, myself, the guidance counselors would, you know, have to try to steer kids in one direction or another. And so we really were looking at a more expanded schedule as, as alleviating that, um, difficulty. We ran into it every single year. Um, on top of that, with the move towards personalized learning, learning mastery-based learning, we do, we just wanted more options in the schedule to really open things up for teachers to be a little bit more collaborative. Um, students to be able to access the courses that they wanted, um, get more enrollment into our elective courses. So we had a lot, a lot of drivers besides those main drivers of efficiency and increasing, uh, the number of available credits. If you look up at the top or if you're looking at your, your sheets, um, we just had a lot, a lot of singletons. And, uh, and those are the upper level classes. Usually when we offer level three, which is, um, a course where students would receive a lot more support, there could only be one section of those. So if we're offering level three English, level three science, level three math, that's another singleton. And when you're going through a seven-period day, uh, you, you just bump into each other. And many times people would have to make the choice of, do I wanna be in band or do I wanna be in French? And we would get creative and say, okay, go to French three times this week and band twice and vice versa the next week. And, uh, just every year, those type of scenarios would present themselves. Um, again, the, the credit situation, the state's moving towards twenty-five, they keep pushing it off right now, I think we're-
I just, I just, I read something in some article that it's like, because of the budget restraints, they're not gonna, you know, that's kind of, they're backing off.
I know, I was, I was trying to do a little research before this, I couldn't find an updated, uh, updated date. I would imagine that with everything going on, this may get kicked down the road yet again. But for many years, I mean, this, I think was for the class of probably two thousand seventeen and eighteen. And now we're up into the class of two thousand twenty-one. And you're right, Joanne, with all the things going on right now, I would not be surprised if it just gets kicked multiple years down the road. We did take a look, if you look at the last couple of lines, um, when we first started looking at this, we looked at our two thousand fourteen graduates and said, well, how many credits did they graduate with this year? And, uh, it was anywhere between twenty-two and twenty-nine. The majority, the majority of students did hit those twenty-five credits, but that's cutting it awful close. You know, if that's the max, you know, you don't wanna be just squeaking by and just making it. And there were definitely some kids who would not have, um, who would not have reached the twenty-five. um, who would not have reached the twenty-five. Um, we did have a committee, uh, we, we had a scheduling committee that was in place in fourteen, fifteen, and then we rolled over a little bit into the fifteen, sixteen school year, and we were really looking at, uh, schedules and we looked at a lot of different schedules and brought in information back to our departments, uh, had discussions with the departments, trying to see what people, uh, were gonna be comfortable with, what they, what they might be able to work with. Uh, we looked at straight eight-period days, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, which would be about a forty-minute period every day, um, at the most, I'll talk about X block in a minute. We looked at some block schedules, um, just a straight A, B kind of block where you have periods one, three, five, seven on one day and two, four, six, eight the next day, and they're like eighty, eighty-five minutes long. We looked at some modified block schedules where, uh, we might have all eight periods meet on Monday and then some block schedules the next few days, or maybe it's only two days of block schedule. Um, we, we looked at some that kind of rolled into the next week where they were two or three-week schedules as opposed to just, right now, we finish our schedule in a week and we come back the next week and it's the same, week after week. The faculty here likes that consistency of knowing that each week is relatively the same regardless of what the ultimate schedule is going to be. Where we finally wound up and what I'm gonna talk about right now is an eight-period day, uh, dropping, dropping two periods out, um, on Tuesday through Thursday. So, this, I, I know it's a little small, I don't know if you can see that in the back and even, uh, in your papers in front of you, this, um, this one really just gives you the timeframe and the period, so if you look down the Monday column, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, every, every period means for, I believe it's about forty, uh, about forty-two minutes, uh, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, forty-two minutes. And then if you look down Tuesday, it would be one, two, three, four, five, six, so we drop out periods seven and eight, they would not meet that day. And then if you look at Wednesday, it's one, two, three, four, seven, eight, so we drop out periods five and six. On Thursday, we would drop out three and four, and on Friday, we would drop out one and two. So, classes, instead of meeting five days a week, they meet four days a week. And you have to have a little bit of a concession, if you're going to, if you're gonna increase and put another period in the school day, something has to give somewhere. And, and some, um, some schools do, just do that straight eight-period schedule where every day there's eight periods and they're all about forty minutes and you do see everybody every day. But one of the things that we've, um, grown very accustomed to and that we're seeing more and more value to, and teachers are finding, um, better and better ways to use it as our X-block period. Uh, this year, we run it on, for, for the past several years, we've been running it on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so we put an extra period into our school day where every student and every teacher is available, um, so that they can do remediation, they can do makeup work, um, they can call students down for extra help, they can get them prepared for a quiz or a test, um, sometimes there's some counseling that happens during those periods, but twice a week, Tuesday, Thursday, we insert that into our schedule and teachers have, uh, really found that to be extremely beneficial, they've grown very accustomed to it. Um, I wish I had printed out that data, Mr. Dalton just, just did some data analysis and eight thousand, seven thousand appointments, how many?
We'll probably, we'll project about nine thousand appointments.
Yeah, so that'll, that'll be nine thousand appointments, nine thousand meetings between teacher and students over the course of the year. So, if you're looking up there, Joanne, let me talk about these for a moment.
Yes, why, why, you say you do X-blocks Tuesday and Thursday, but yet it's on.
Yes, because that's next, this is what we're looking at in the future. Right now, we do it two days a week because we can fit it into our schedule. When we were looking at a schedule, um, for next year, we tried a two-day-a-week, but because, you know, you're dropping out different periods every day, if you only did the X-block on Tuesday, Thursday, like we did now, then periods, uh, one, you know, different periods would get short shrift, they, they would get impacted differently. So, we had first looked at a schedule where one week we do the X-block on Tuesday, Thursday, and then the next week, we do it on Wednesday, Friday, and it just shifted when things were meeting, how they were meeting, and as I said, we, we kinda like consistent, I don't care what the schedule is, but let's make it consistent every week. So, we compromised and so that, you know, as I said, if we had the, the X-block on Tuesday, Thursday, those periods would all be a little shorter as compared to Wednesday, Friday, and they'd be different periods. So, we put about a half hour in every day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, um, just to, one, to make it a little more equitable in terms of how periods are impacted, two, um, because what we found this year is, we only have X-block twice a week, and in a perfect world where we never had to take those away, there'd be two periods every week strictly devoted to academics. Unfortunately, we have assemblies, we have speakers come in, we're gonna be administering a survey, uh, sometimes guidance has to administer surveys or meet with the kids, so, uh, there's sometimes, uh, some weeks where we lose both of those X-blocks because we've taken them for some other purpose besides that academic extra help, um, that, that we intended for. So, by, we're looking at four days a week up there, but that means every week, there'd be at least two, possibly three periods available for that extra help, even if we stall a period because we have to, um, meet with all the classes that week.
So, you're scheduling in the time, two of those might be official X-block, X-blocks, like the other two time periods of Wednesday and Friday would be for other things going on in school.
We, yes, we might, uh, when we start, uh, start up in August, September, we're gonna wanna meet with the classes, well, that would be a time when we call the juniors, more freshman seniors now, um, yes. I'm convoluted in my response, but yes.
No, okay. Oh, good.
Um, this is not, the next, this next slide just delineates minutes a little bit, um, we tried to even out the minutes of the day, uh, you will notice that the second period has a few extra minutes, six minutes in it, uh, that's because we, we're gonna put our announcements and attendance into second period so that we use that full thirty minutes, um, of the X-block for the purpose it was intended, that we're not eating into that with announcements and, um, attendance.
Advisory?
Advisory, well, that, that would be one of the things that we steal one of those for.
Okay, so that would be like an X-block.
That would be an X-block, that was, that's another, if we have an advisory activity or it comes out of X-block.
So, it'd be, okay, good.
So, we thought putting, putting four in makes the time distribution more equitable and it leaves those openings for us to do all those things while still leaving time for, uh, the extra support for students. Let me see what I've left out. Mike, Mr. Dalton, anything, uh, that you think I've left out along the way so far?
No, I really, I think that, that about conversation, I mean, we were, the, uh, the addition of the extra two X-blocks, um, we received a lot of feedback from faculty about the, uh, proposal to have an A, B, or D week where we just have two X-block days per week, and, uh, the faculty, from, from all the feedback we got, they really wanted the four X-blocks a week, and I think they've started to see the utilization of X-block has increased over the years, and we put it in place about five years ago, and, you know, there were about, uh, you know, sixty-five hundred appointments that year, and now we're up to about nine thousand, and, uh, I think that, you know, more and more research shows that, uh, it really stresses this idea of personalized learning and, uh, the X-block I think helps us to incorporate that more personalization into, um, the students' program because the teachers can then meet with those students who are struggling, uh, outside the classroom environment, and they can really kind of tailor the learning to that individual student, it, it helps that a lot. Uh, I think you'll see that utilization will only increase, uh, as we move forward.
So, X-blocks works still the same way as original where if the kids sign up or something or the teachers can say, I need to see you X-blocks on Tuesday or something, or is it still?
Right now, it's primarily a teacher sign up, we have a system in place created by our own, our own, uh, faculty that's come up with a tremendous hub where they can just go into a spreadsheet and sign up, say, Joanne, you're coming to Mr. Fidler on, on Thursday of this week, and so your homeroom teacher would just send you, um, but right now, it's mostly teacher-driven, we're trying to reach that point of it being, you know, fifty-fifty more student-driven, that the students are going, uh, to seek out the extra, and that does happen. Students will go if they're stuck, if a big project's coming up, if they want some extra help, uh, they do go seek out teachers, but right now, it's primarily teachers, um, calling the kids now.
But if they don't have to have an interaction with a teacher, they can just work on?
Yes.
Go to library, work on their project, collaborate with kids, or whatever.
Yes, any of those.
So, if they're gonna have the Chromebooks for next year, uh, all students, would they actually use their Chromebooks to kind of drive the personalized learning with scheduling with their teachers, knowing that they might need them as part of that process?
I'm saying good.
Well, like, for Chromebooks, so you have, I don't know, scheduling, uh, the blocks and say, I really need to see my French teacher at such and such time, having like that personalized, uh, aside schedule for them to actually have them drive that.
That's where we're trying to get, I don't know if we can open the, uh, the hub up to the students because, um, appointments will disappear at the same time as they're getting made, but that, that is exactly where we're trying to get to.
The other question I have also regarding the schedule is, what happens if you have a bunch of snow days and you're losing out on, you only have four, uh, times a, a major subject matter reaches, how does that kinda impact the students or are you gonna say, oh, well, maybe biology class, it's missed three times that week because of snow, we're gonna switch the schedule?
Yeah, we're gonna have to make some adjustments, or even in weeks like Thanksgiving where, uh, we only have a Monday, Monday, Tuesday, and half of a Wednesday, those might all be eight-period days, they might just say, you meet in eight periods every day, we can't, otherwise you do, you lose out on a few, few periods.
Personalized schedule.
Yes, yes. Uh, as I said, we, we do take a drop in instructional minutes per class, uh, right now, meeting five days a week, uh, there are two hundred twenty-six minutes of instruction per class. Uh, next year, it would be a hundred ninety-eight, so that is a bit of a drop, but, uh, in order to open up that flexibility, um, and you, and you still have the X-block periods where you can see those kids that really need that extra time, also, the classes are a little bit longer, so there's time within there to do some, um, differentiation and, and give extra help.
Could they also, could the student also try for that personalized learning, say that they're all caught up in the teachers or they wanna do that extra, like you're saying, you're losing minutes, uh, maybe, um, having accommodations for them to kind of develop their own personalized learning, moving that forward as well.
Yeah, a lot of things are happening with technology, we just had a couple of great technology workshops that are really making the flipped classroom look more and more like a possibility that, uh, that students could go home with those Chromebooks and view a lesson or view what their teacher wants them to be, uh, prepared for, even though they might not see it. Um, really, that, that eighth period, and I'm gonna have Mr. Dalton in a minute talk again, because he, he was primarily the one doing the scheduling this year, so he'll be able to speak to the difference having that eighth period, uh, in the day to schedule. Uh, our electives, the enrollment went up in our elective classes, I think we were much more successful at filling all the requests that student had, students had. Um, the one piece that, that is an up here that I will talk about is, is what a teacher's schedule would, would look like, uh, because there's thirty-two, if I go back a couple, um, that's, there's thirty-two class periods in that week. You have four days of six periods, that's twenty-four, plus the eight on Mondays, thirty-two. Teachers would be teaching twenty of those periods, they'd have five, five classes, five courses that they would teach still, um, but they'd only be four days a week, they would still have five preps, they would have four duties, but we, the extra piece that we really feel like we've been missing are some PLC periods, some collaborative periods, some times when teachers can get together with each other, get together with their departments, be able to work together a little more, so there'd be three of those periods, um, built into their schedule each week, which we just don't have now. We really don't, you know, I, I shouldn't say this out loud, but we don't really have data teams because we don't have the time to get together in data teams. Do departments look at their data? Absolutely. Uh, once a month in a department meeting, maybe they get together another time after school, so they absolutely are looking at data, making decisions about student, making decisions about the instruction that they wanna do in their classes, um, but they just don't have that built-in time. So, this schedule, um, will give them a few periods a week where there's common prep time, common planning time, uh, where they're available to get together for more collaborations. Even this year, not having any of that, we have tremendous collaborations going on, interdisciplinary collaborations that we've never had before, uh, and we really think that this will just open up the door even further for more and more of that to happen. Um, the whole concept of personalized learning and the planning that has to take place to really make sure that everybody's getting what they need, I just think that having that time and the schedule that we're really lacking right now is gonna make, going to make a huge difference. Um, Mike, anything you wanna add about the scheduling this year and going through the process?
Just, you know, doing the schedule, just seeing the impact of adding an eighth day has had a tangible impact on the number of student requests for different elective courses, and in almost every department in the building, um, you know, we're looking at over two hundred requests, you know, courses, technology, education, had a big increase in requests, art department had a big increase in requests, uh, business education, over two hundred requests, um, in the botany class alone, we had eighty-nine requests for botany alone for that one course, uh, and that doesn't include science and natural disasters and the environmental science courses and those other science electives that we had a large number of requests for, so, you know, it's, it's not, you can see that the students always wanted to take these courses and now they're gonna be given the opportunity to, and we didn't have to, uh, the computer actually overscheduled some of these electives, uh, so it was just their fault. Uh, family consumer science is another one, they have over two hundred requests for taking to take those courses, so, the schedules have a big positive impact on, uh, the diversity of classes that are available, students just adding that, doesn't seem like adding one period to the day would have a big impact on that, but when you think about the, um, you know, the science courses, for example, that have labs, uh, adding that extra period allows you to have that lab time, it doesn't eat up, you know, eats up more or less period a day because in the past, you know, two of those periods have seven, eaten up by, uh, the science of the lab, and now there just isn't that extra, you know, period where they can get some more flexibility in there. So, so it has, it's made a tangible difference in terms of, uh, scheduling, um, and that's just into a preliminary schedule work, so, it's a big positive, I think.
And that, that was a big impact because all of those requests were not filled in past years, um, and many, many, a much higher percentage of them.
Oh, and we have one more plug, music technology course had over sixty requests, and that, that one was a great success to me, I mean, that was, that's a brand-new course and a brand-new facility and it's never been taught before, over sixty students requesting the course, and that was, uh, that, that really warmed my heart to see that.
So, so what's next to make this happen?
Your, your blessing, I guess, we're kinda trying, we, uh, we really think it's the right answer for the high school, we really think that this is what's going, you know, you've heard Mike talk about filling so, so, so many more student requests, um, you know, there are some things that change, it's only four days a week, there's a little bit less instructional time, but, um, we're getting more and more efficient with technology, as I said, with flipped classroom, but putting a Chromebook in everybody's hands, um, I think it's still gonna work and I, I think it's gonna work better for the high school and what we need.
Chris, the board is not required to vote on the high school's schedule, it was something that we felt was important, the two.
Is this a possibility for the middle school as well? If this is such a success, just put that question out.
I think we always can look at schedules to improve what we do.
Okay.
Any, any other questions?
And then we don't need to, but I, I mean, if we could, I would vote and say yes, I have my support, that might point you.
Yes.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. [applause] Little for our next presentation?
Are you starting this? Yes.
Hi, everybody, I'm Kristen Flanery. I'm an English teacher at the high school.
I'm Trish Sealy, also an English teacher at the high school.
I'm Katie Teigen, I'm the library media specialist at the high school.
So we were asked to come present to the board and the community tonight about the senior capstone project. We're in our second year of adventuring through the process. We wanted to share how the project has sort of evolved and what it's going to look like 48 short hours from now at the expo Thursday night.
Which is six to eight, not six to 10.
Yes. My heart dropped. So it's sort of funny tonight, listening to the budget and Mr. Fidler and talking about personalized learning because everything sort of comes together for us. As of now, the state of Connecticut has written a law over and over and over again that eventually seniors graduating from high schools need to complete a senior demonstration project. It was originally supposed to be for the class of 2017, and then 18, and then 19. And now, I think, the law, when I looked it up today, still said 2020, although based on what Mrs. Barmsley said, I have a feeling that even that is going to get kicked down the road a little farther. But knowing that the state often tells us that we have to do certain things without giving us the pieces, we decided a few years ago to research and plan and come up with our own capstone project and protocols in the hopes that when the state does finalize what we need to do or what we need to have our seniors do, we can show them something that already works for us, it's become a part of our culture, and maybe they would leave us alone and we could just do what works. So in 2014, 2015, we did some research, we researched other programs. I met with other teachers, whenever I saw anybody at conferences, like, "Oh, does your school do this? What do you do? What do you do? Tell me what you do." And then last year, the 2015, 2016 school year, we piloted with about 90 seniors over the course of the year, and it was quite the adventure. Ms. Sealy had 70 of said seniors, so she worked her behind off to help make that happen. This year is our first full-class implementation. There'll be over 125 senior projects on display Thursday night in the T-Val, in the CAF, in the hallway, on the front steps, on the back steps, and in the library. We'll be gallivanting around to meet.
There'll be live animals, there'll be catapults in the back.
Yes, all sorts of things.
Catapulting the live animals.
We're trying to plan, we're going to keep them separate. So our mission is to give the seniors the opportunity to learn the skills that they've used over their East Hampton education, to take control of their personalized learning journeys and their, you know, their futures are right there, they're on the ledge, ready to take off. And this is an opportunity for them to take a passion project, something they've always wanted to try, something that maybe strikes them with a moment of inspiration over the summer between junior and senior year, and give them the year to learn how to research, to find a mentor, to ask questions, to advocate for themselves, and finally shake hands with strangers on Thursday evening and talk about what they've learned and what they're able to do now that they didn't know how to do 10 months ago. So yeah, that's where we are.
And if I could just add too, because we had so many projects last year that were outside, for example, a lawnmower that was turned into a go-kart. It's a chance for students that maybe don't do the best academically, but they're super intelligent in other areas, to show those multiple intelligences because we're all different. And I was especially proud of a lot of students where I'm looking at what they did and I'm like blown away, "Oh yeah, I did this and I did this." And I'm like, "Yeah, I don't know." And it's like so impressive. It was, it gave them a time to shine and something to be very proud of, so.
Absolutely. So we piloted the program, as Kristen was saying, last year, and we've already talked about a lot of the exemplary projects. One of the great things that I saw coming out of this was students learning not only exploring something that they're passionate about, but also learning some skills. We noticed that kids needed some support and some practice to cold-call places if they had to call strangers to work out details about volunteering or making arrangements. We also worked on some interpersonal skills with them and we're kicking that up a notch this year too, working on their pitches. We brought two wonderful students with us today who are going to tell you a little bit about their particular projects this year momentarily. We even had some great opportunities where students were able to make professional connections, and one of them is sitting here in his room tonight, helping with the IT.
All because of his project last year. And we did, we did work with primarily just in the pilot English classes last year. And then this year, we made some nice changes to expand the program out into the school.
And there's some of our examples. So we had a composter, and that's actually, I think, Mr. Abraham is still using that. And then we had a bakery business, which I believe, Mr. Smith, you may have purchased some baked goods from that student, Amanda.
Yes, she had a contractual agreement, the capstone project to provide baked goods for the superintendent's advisory council meeting. She did a wonderful job.
She was over the moon at getting hired for her first official gig at the capstone school last year.
And we were featured in the newspaper last year for a flag football tournament for charity to raise money for a mental health organization. So we're very proud. For the first year, these kids did some amazing work. Current year, okay. When reflecting back, because clearly we're teachers, so that's what we like to do, how can we make things better? Yeah. We made some changes and improvements to the project for this year. So for example, every senior this year had a participate, which it was great because last year they were kind of hemming and hawing when we started, but this year they were kind of like, "Oh, we're all having to do this." They started it last year. Yes, okay. And instead of only two English teachers that were librarian, we had four English teachers this year. Plus, we also had the benefit of every senior homeroom teacher serving as an advisor. And that gave us more of a community, school-wide, whole-school feel.
So that was another example, just to go back to John's presentation earlier too, talking about X-block periods. That's one way that we utilized X-block periods this year also, was to build in time for those senior homeroom teachers to confer with their students about their projects.
Thank you, Mrs. Stroud. Our philosophy and vision was for it to be a whole-school, community endeavor. So I think that's where we're going with this. In addition to the increased student support this year, instead of just showcasing in the cafeteria, we figured we have this beautiful new building, so how can we show our community? And we did invite more of the resident population this year, and three reporters, and we sent out numerous invitations. Thank you, Captain. But we'll be in the CAF, we'll be in the main lobby, we'll be behind the school, we'll be in the patio where the goat and the puppy and the DJ will be, catapult in the back.
With the go-karts.
With the go-karts. And the live utility poles.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So it's going to be incredible. That being said, Katie, Kristen, and I are especially proud of the exceptional work that these kids have done. I wanted to highlight three students. One of them, he couldn't be here tonight, his name is Ryan Cretor, and he's the one pictured in the Eversource truck. So he did an internship with Eversource and built a working model power station. He has just an incredible depth and breadth of his project, he did a lot of research. He did surveys for the students and for faculty to talk about power safety. He's just super focused, he was highlighted in East Hampton Patch. So we're just especially proud of him and the work that he's done. And he'll be here on Thursday, he'll be the ones with the utility poles in the back.
You're the captain.
Two of my other students, I have Celia Basso here and Mo Man Khudari, and they're here to talk about, she has a memoir project, and you have Afghanistan Enlightenment Project. So I'd like to give them a chance to speak and share. Yep, our shining stars.
Hi, I'm Celia Basso. I did Operation Military Memoirs, that was my title, where I contacted soldiers and had them write letters about their experiences overseas, and I made a book out of all their letters, and I hope to give the book to soldiers and veterans in VA hospitals battling PTSD and traumatic injuries. I did this because PTSD is a rising problem right now, and it's really sad to see that. And I also want to join the Army after college, so. And I learned that people hide how they're actually feeling inside, and if, that's really sad. They could look really tough on the outside, but they're actually really dying in the hole on the inside. So I wanted to help those who couldn't help themselves. Hold up your glass.
So I'm Mo Man. My senior project, I decided to show the positive aspects of Afghanistan. The reason I did this, because I traveled to Afghanistan probably three times before, and I like noticed so much positivity there, but like in the media, they can't like, they don't show it. So I was like, "We have a huge investment in Afghanistan, it's unfortunate, like you don't always see the negative things." It's important we like see what we helped Afghan people achieve over 15, last 15 years. And some of the activities I participated was in a world cultural fest. I met a photojournalist, Paula Bronstein, I interviewed her about my new book, Afghanistan Between Hope and Fear. And I've been just really like asking my parents about Afghanistan and the history, because I really don't know much about it, but now I do.
Tell them about what you're doing tomorrow.
Oh yeah, tomorrow I'm doing an enlightenment about Afghanistan event. It's 2:30 to 4 o'clock, and we'll do some Afghan food.
So last year, my senior capstone project was to figure out how to take a time-lapse video on my phone. And Doc, Art, and I, with, what was it, a cero from coffee cup, duct tape, and an extension cord, managed to tape my phone to the upper corner of the cafeteria and take a time-lapse video of the expo. It lasts 38 seconds, and there it is, that's all the kids setting up. You can see Mr. Fidler eventually being held hostage towards the middle center of the screen. He seems to stand still while everyone moves around him. And then everybody, everybody clears out, and you can see me take my shoes off at the end of the evening. Katie, you have to stop before you get to my daughter's Christmas opening guest video, which is next time. So it's a whirlwind evening. I think we're going to ask Mr. Warner over here to walk around with a selfie stick Thursday night, since the expo takes place in so many locations. I still want to have a feeling, a video artifact, especially for Neask, that shows all of the awe-inspiring, in the truest sense of the word, events that'll happen on Thursday night.
During the day on Thursday also, if that's an easier time for you to make it, we will be running a mini version of the senior project expo throughout the course of the day so that the underclassmen from the English classes can come through and get a sense of the projects. So that'll be happening essentially every period during school day, in the library on Thursday also.
Now, do the kids, obviously they're presenting at these times to the public and the kids, do they have to do a formal presentation to a panel of teachers or anything? They want to, is there a class? I mean, how do they?
Some schools, some schools do do it that way, where they present a formal to a panel at the end of the school year. Our focus right now is to really make, to try to get it to be a school culture event where it becomes something that towards the end of junior year or even sophomore year, kids are starting to think, and eventually they'll come in as freshmen and know that this is going to be their thing. So for right now, we're still trying to share everything with everybody as much as possible. But there are presentations to junior English classes that happen, so the juniors in particular specifically get to have a close, in-depth contact with some of the seniors to see what they've done.
But as far as the grading and passing, we've collectively agreed on portfolio items, like requirements that should be in the portfolio. So for my classes, I've required an online format. Just thinking about college and thinking ahead, a lot of college professors now expect you to have a collection of work in 21st century and have it built online. So I have, you know, a checklist of items that I expect from each of my senior students, and they know they can't pass if they don't have some of the items. So that's where the grading part comes into the question. Because all the projects are so different, but if we have the same requirements for each, it allows us to make the grading more clear.
Very nice.
Interesting presentation. So, okay, moving on, unfinished business, we have five second reads policies, policy committee, I don't know if you.
Mr. Fielding is here to answer questions that you have about one-to-one technology.
Yep.
I think, Joanne, you asked me to invite Rich.
There were some questions last time when we were about to do the technology one.
He can just give you an overall view of one-to-one technology and our implementation plan very briefly.
So right now, we do have plans, we are still planning a one-to-one at the high school program for next year, continuing one-to-one at the middle school for next year. And that will, obviously, we're going to be purchasing a bunch of new Chromebooks to start the year up. And now we've transitioned the role of our previous media specialist to also become the person overseeing the one-to-one program at the high school and will be stationed out of the high school, that's what I read over here, who's currently a parent at the middle school and will be full-time at the high school next year. So in doing that, each student will be given a Chromebook at the high school and will be given the option to purchase insurance for that Chromebook. One of the forms we have today, so the review is an insurance opt-in form. And it's very similar to the program that I pulled out at Kaggachak High School two years ago, in that every student is given the device, they take it home with them, it's at the high school, not the middle school. That's where they typically will leave their charging cable for it, charge it overnight, bring it into school the next day. The battery should last them throughout the day, and then take it home and charge it. We're reviewing models for next year to purchase that we feel are going to be ruggedized enough to handle going into the backpack and going out in the lesson. And with the idea that we want them to last four years for students' whole high school career. So the device the freshmen are given will last them through their senior year. And because we know that our juniors and seniors' devices aren't going, we're not going to want to turn them around and hand it back, juniors and seniors should be getting hand-me-down devices that are, those devices that are currently new. So we're not buying brand-new devices for every high school student next year. It's more of a, we're rolling them in so that they can get rid of them once they're all reached the four-year life span. So other things too, that we've, you know, already taken into consideration is that having Irene at the high school to be able to kind of be there for triage, so if a student forgets their Chromebook for the day, we'll have a cart of backups, spare Chromebooks that they'll be able to borrow, just like a reference book they can't take at home and can check it out for the day, and keep it in the school, bring it back and plug it in at the end of the day. If their charging didn't happen properly overnight, they forgot to charge it, they'll be able to borrow a charging cable from the same, from the library as well, same thing, take it out like a reference material so they can carry around them. Or if they know that they don't need their device because they're going to PE or something, they can drop it off in the library and charge it for a period or two so they can get it back, they know they need to use it after school or something. So all these things are, I have done before and know they work, so we've got a good place to start from. The policies that were put together and updated are fantastic, they really cover us on all our bases. And with the insurance policy, it really does, while there is a cost to it, it still shows the students that they have to own that device and take care of it. It's not just something that they can toss around and carefree about, because there is still, even with the insurance, a cost to repairs or replacement if something does happen to that device. And there's apparent ownership of that as well on a lot of those policies. So all around, it's just a really great. So, all around, it's just a really great foundation to get this program on the run. It's been well thought out, well planned. And so, I appreciate all the work that was put into it. I superintendent spent with the rest of you on really dotting the i's and crossing the t's on these policies. Very good. Obviously, here, I have some questions that I have.
Can I help, Joanne?
Yeah.
I know, a lot of you know Irene as a parent, and also very involved in our local prevention council. And Irene has jumped right into the role that begins on July 1 by, she's gonna do all the live streaming of our meetings. She'll pick up the website, and she'll also oversee the Chromebook program at the high school. Welcome.
Okay, so, we had second reads. There was four policies with the fifth one being eliminated. So, without any objections or comments, if you want to bundle that.
Just approve the lots. Okay, so, motion to adjourn. Which policy? It'd be policy number 6141.321. Which one is the removal? Oh, okay. Policy 6141.321. Okay, it'd be the forms, the regulations go with it. Policy 4118.51. And the elimination of policy 41, sorry, 6141.321.
So, we have motion and second by Erica. Discussion on, for anyone who's into one of elimination. All those in favor? Thanks to you. Thank you again. New business. First one is for you, I believe.
Yes, so, I did not bring this to the board until I knew that there was interest in the trip to China in June 2018. We had a meeting on May 2. I figured we needed about 12 people to make the, 12 to 16 to make the trip a reality. Right now, I've had to start a waiting list, because we are over 50 at this point. And I'm willing to travel with, I brought 50 people to China before. I'm very comfortable doing it. But I think, once it gets over 50, it's a slow-moving group. So, I'm anticipating, by the time the dust settles, probably between 40 and 50 people going. So, I'm asking, since there is interest in a trip to China in June 2018, for the board to approve that trip.
I must have missed that meeting.
And, yes, okay, so, let's make a motion, get this through, and we'll get a discussion. And go from there. So, do we have a motion to approve this China trip in 2018? Dad, second?
Second.
Okay, Joanne. So, now, discussion. And are the first questions gonna be, we have all the official policies and sign-offs on overseas travel, all that, everything's up to date with that? Have to ask that question. Anything else? Anyone? Besides wanting to go?
Just that.
Okay.
Scheduled for after the school year, because it's in June?
Yep.
Yeah, it will be right after graduation.
Does that mean you're not gonna commit to the dates?
Well, not knowing when. I have the flexibility, well, this is 2018.
Right.
So, I have the flexibility with the person who arranges our travel to give, to finalize the dates between February and March.
All right, all those in favor? All right. You're unanimous.
Thank you very much.
The board wants gifts.
Gifts, gifts. Paul's great.
I don't need gifts, I don't want to go.
Okay, a couple new policies. Actually, there's four. Any comments, thoughts on info on these?
Yeah, these are the first reads.
Yes.
Do you want to go through them, or?
Anything you want to highlight in them for us, before we read them for next time?
I don't think so. I mean, there are a couple of new ones. 1360 is just how we feel people should behave on school grounds. There are a couple of student-centered ones. The 4,000 ones are student-focused probation. And then 6172 is a new policy from CAE, they suggested about alternative education.
Yes, since we have an alternative education program, we are required to have a policy on that program. And Mr. Mo, you're gonna spend some time and help draft a very nice policy based on the CAE guidelines.
Good job. Okay, so, do you have any comments as you go through those? Get ahold of Jeff, the superintendent? Those are good for next time. All right, now, we have the addition to the agenda. This afternoon, I received resignation and confirmation from the town clerk that I am submitting to you my resignation from the Board of Education from Kenneth Barber. I don't think it's a surprise. He has not been able to be here a lot. Due to work, things change here. He's actually increased, doing a lot more work, taking his time. So, it's good for him, but not good. So, so, we're in a situation where we have a lot going on regarding vacancies, surprisingly. But I have a thought, and this is what I'd like to do.
I have your vacancy policy.
Okay, I was just gonna ask about that. Back in January, this board, we approved the vacancy policy, filling vacancies. This is what we, as a board, decided, even separate from whatever lawsuits going on and discrepancy, this is what the board felt we needed to do moving forward, which I think is a great thing. So, looking at this, I'd like to follow this and use this as our guide and perceive how the Board of Ed has for the past 20 years plus in filling its vacancies. So, with that, a couple motions. So, just to highlight what we'll need to do is, we'll need to instruct the superintendent to announce and advertise vacancy of the position.
Second.
Now, yeah, no, hold on. Don't, no, no, just laying it out. I know. Read, Erica. So, to advertise and announce vacancy of a position that is, actually, it's a two more years. So, the seat is through November of 2019. In there, I suggest, according to the policy, that we have a deadline date for interested people to nominate themselves of May 25. So, if that gets in the paper on the 19th, which is this Friday, gives them a week to reply, then we need to wait a minimum of five days before doing any interviews. So, we could set interviews for May 30th, correct? Tuesday, after a weekday weekend?
If you advertise effective the 19th, then, and you have a deadline of the 26th.
Yeah.
That is five business days of advertising. Right, so you have five full business days, so you could interview on the 30th.
Okay, so, that works.
Because it's the five days after public advertising. It's not when public advertising ceases.
Yeah, so, that gives us plenty of time. We could still do the interviews on that 30th, that Tuesday night.
So, that's May?
May.
The day after tomorrow of it?
Oh, my goodness, that's, I think you have to go ahead.
And then, appointment of that position, of the vacancy. Should we do it that night, or at our next meeting on June 5? How, how do we do that before, filling vacancies?
That night.
That night after we're done with interviews, we discuss?
We discuss. And executive. I mean, I don't know how formal it was. It was usually a phone call. You know, we do the, we make the decision, and then the chair calls. So, I don't know if it needs to be more formal, actually.
Okay, so, we'd need to post, you post-interviews as a special meeting?
Yes.
On the 30th? Because interviews, you don't need to post, but if you're going to have a business agenda item where you are approving a member, you would have a special meeting.
Because we're gonna have to take the vote then.
We schedule that in executive session after.
Well, special.
Well, you have to come out of executive session to vote.
To vote, that's right.
Okay, so then, we'll do appointment on 30th. So, okay, so, to recap, here's what we're gonna do. Motion would be to instruct the superintendent to announce and advertise the vacancy of a Board of Education seat term to go through November of 2019. That will be in this Friday's advertisement of River East.
With a due date.
With a deadline to reply of May 26. Interviews of those interested will be scheduled with the help of Rosemary on May 30th, where the board will have a special meeting and make the appointment at that time. Erica, is that a second? Or you're making a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Erica's making a motion, Jeff, second. Okay, now, we'll open discussion on all this. Anyone?
Follows all the rules?
Okay.
What time?
Should we do time to be determined at this point?
For interview, do you want to start interviews at 6?
I got one question, though. Are we gonna put it on our own website?
Oh, I'm sure we could, right?
I will email every parent. We'll put it in the, on the website. We'll put it in my weekly update, and we'll put it in the River East.
So, we're overdoing our requirements?
Right.
Good, perfect.
I got it on my phone.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
6:00 PM interviews, it may be 2, it may be 3, it may be 45.
So, when is Ken's resignation effective?
It's effective this afternoon, when he turned it in to the town clerk. Yeah, that's when it goes into effect. And it was dated today. It was short and sweet.
So, essentially, you could decide that night, that person will start, will attend the last?
Pending them getting sworn in. Stay after they're sworn in, then they can start. June 6, yep. Whatever. Okay, future business, none that I know of. No personnel audiences, citizens, maybe a few left. And we did a lot tonight, so thank you for hanging in there. Yes, me, too.
Jamie, I'm from the Abbey Road. I hadn't planned on talking, and this is sort of trivial in the grand scheme of the budget and stuff, but I see that you guys are reviewing a lot of the computer and technology stuff. And I have to say, as a parent of a now second grader, when he was a kindergarten and he got the contract signed, it was lacable that somebody that was five years old had to comprehend that language. And so, every year, my husband and I literally laugh as we have him sign it. And now, this year, in second grade, his teacher uses a ton of technologies, really engaged with the Chromebook and stuff. And it's just been this year that, you know, really, he's the hard way, had to understand, you know, securing your password. Just because you know your teacher's pattern for assigning passwords to your friends doesn't mean you should use them. So, I would encourage you to maybe consider some type of language that would be a little bit more appropriate for that age group, when, however that fits in, because I haven't read all these policies. But I think parents could really engage in really good conversations with their little ones if we have the right language ourselves as people who aren't necessarily techie. So, anyway.
Thank you.
That's my feedback.
Thank you. I feel I should want to make a comment.
So, one of the policies that actually we passed tonight, the appropriate use policy, the forms that go along with it, have language that is differentiated within schools. So, the language is age-appropriate, and use examples in terms that are understandable and acceptable by those age groups.
I think always open to suggestions, so, thank you. Yeah. Anything else? All right, thank you, everyone who was on, and we did a lot. Motion to adjourn? Derek, second, did it? Yes. Thank you.